I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Here.
Here.
Here. Yes.
Here.
Done.
Yep.
And stop here.
Public participation rules. I think we have to even read those. There's nobody even here. Okay, adoption of agenda.
Let me motion.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Provo of minutes from December 11th, 2023.
I just support or to make the motion or accept?
All support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, public comments. Is there anybody? There's nobody on. We have no guests here. I mean, Susan, yes, she's a presenter, so Nathan, you don't. Okay. Sue.
Thank you. I'll be speedy. I need, I need Lynn to help me, but other than that. Um, Nathan invited me because the township owns a pretty significant portion of Thunder Bay Island already, which contains all the remaining buildings that are on the southern tip of this island.
What question is there? Is it haunted? You know, did you read the paper?
Actually, yes. Yes.
The one, the one up by Mass Seek is haunted, so I wonder.
Yes, this one is. Um, what you're looking at was Thunder Bay, Sugar, Gull. There's kind of a five island. That's okay. Um. So you're obviously the biggest one there. Um, I think what you need in some, most people do, are not aware of this, but that island used to be a tropical reef. And so on the east side, there are fossils that are exposed 350 million years old. We have at every university you could imagine here that has studied what is out there. Um, they are protected under the National Antiquities Act. The unfortunate thing is there's really not a lot of, um, ways to enforce people not, you know, gouging things out of the rock. Um, this, this in particular is just amazing. It's a lungfish that is totally intact and preserved in the rock. Um, and so every time I see it, it just blows my mind. These are sea coral and, and there's just tons of them. Uh, especially on the east side where the waves have really worn down the limestone. Um, that's a base of a fan coral. It's, um. I, I always think that looks like a monkey's face, but really it's the basis for just. Those are the striations made when the glaciers came over and the water is really low. Those are all exposed. Um, so it's amazing. And you can see your little lighthouse sitting back there with that nice bright red roof. Um, it's considered an Alvar ecosystem. It's one of only five on planet Earth. The closest to what we have in Thunder Bay Island is in the Baltic Sea. So it's very rare. Um, the ecotourism opportunities out there are exponential. Uh, I, I can't stress it enough and I don't want to be a salesman tonight. I just wanted to share this with you. Um, it's always until the township received a land patent, uh, belonged to the federal government. Andrew Jackson approved, um, the lighthouse way back in 1831, but it was signed as a federal reservation and it stayed that way until it was transferred to Elpina Township. Um, it has all the first that it happened in Elpina County are out there. Um, you know, all the, the general stores, the schools, the fishing villages, everything that started in Elpina started there. So you have a huge, rich piece of, of history. The life-saving station that was on the island was probably one of the most commended stations that was in the U.S. Life, Life Saving Service. In their time between 1877 to 1915, they were credited with saving over 1,000 lives. And mind you, they, they did not have a motorized boat. It was a lot of men with a lot of oars. So it was incredible. Um, that was their lifeboat that they were awarded from the, uh, the, the World's Fair in, boy, I want to say 18. It might've been 1910. Um, but that was the first time that they had a really cool official lifeboat. That barracks is gone and the aerial that you see of the station itself, you have the tower, the building that's attached to it, which is the keeper's quarters. Uh, one tiny little building that's kind of off to the south that, uh, we put all the flammables in. The other three buildings, um, have been destroyed and are long gone. The society that maintains it for the township has been doing this very quietly and patiently since 1996. Um, we're just, I think now entering a new era where we have to be a little bit more vocal and we have to make the community understand how important it is. Um, you know, we have a management agreement and, and I think we have a good partnership with the township. Uh, we've always worked well together. Uh, we tell them what we're going to do. Uh, we give them a year-end report about what we accomplished. Uh, they're very gracious to, uh, make a budget allocation for us to use for a part of our efforts. But the majority of our funds that we use are either from grant sources or fundraising efforts on our own behalf. Um, in fact, I think when we presented our 2021, uh, report, uh, we had invested uh, almost $300,000 while the township's portion of investment was 26,000. So there's a little disparity, but that's not the point. The point is it's getting done and we have a great group of volunteer professionals who do it. Um, we've had some major projects, as you can see. Uh, the, the grant to, uh, repair the tower, uh, was quite a logistical nightmare. It's, it's difficult to get contractors to bid on projects out there because it is offshore 14 miles. So it makes life a little, uh, a little difficult. Not to mention our biggest obstacle is that we don't have a decent permanent dock. So we put on a new standing seam metal roof on the keeper's quarters. Um, that was done in 2006. We've been, we've replaced all the doors on the Fog Signal Building so that they're, they're now secure. They're not historical, but at least the property is secure. And this is the first room inside the keeper's quarters that we have a complete restoration done on. This is the way it looked in 1955 when the gentleman who occupied that room, um, took over the station. He is still alive and he is still a member of our society. So that closet is full of artifacts. Um, some of them, his uniform and different things that he's donated. Some of them, the life-saving era and a lot of them, the Coast Guard era. Uh, that's a picture of the one oil can building that we have. And that's when we were starting, uh, an interpretive display for the tram that used to exist that there was a track that went all the way to the south end of the island where there used to be a dock where boats could unload and they pulled, um, you know, cargo back to the station. So we, we just put a replica, just an interpretive, uh, replica there. So people understood how they got a lot of their materials moved back and forth. Um, this was the big, big obstacle. The island was left with a lot of contamination by the Coast Guard when they, uh, decommissioned the station and it had to be cleaned up before they could transfer ownership to Elpina Township. Um, so the Coast Guard brought in a barge from Ryba up in Sheboygan. They, uh, just anchored on the east side of the island and drove all that equipment onto shore. They took off, I don't know how many cubic, I mean, thousands of cubic yards of contaminated soil. And it had to be done so that it could transfer with a clean, uh, a clean title, so to speak. The next section is basically, Lynn will move to the next slide, but, um, and I think this is the part that, um, I think I want to emphasize the most. Everything that I've showed you for the most part was prior to the township taking ownership. Everything from here on has happened since the township has been the owner. And it's, it's been a lot of projects. Most of them have been grant funded, but, um, technology. This was when they were putting, these historical metal shingles were the very same shingles that were put on that building when it was built in 1906. Yes, we found the company still existed in Texas and they still manufactured that same Victorian shingle. Um, so we're really lucky. We got a, a grant from the state of historical. You might know some of these guys. They're, they're a good group of people and one day they helped us do a whole lot of work out there. Like install that sign that was donated by the Bureau of Land Management when they transferred the southern end of the island. Do you not recognize yourself, Tom?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And Norm too.
And Norm and Nathan, yeah. I stuck that in there to see if you are aware. This was.
I knew I didn't install that sign. Just stood by it.
The, the end of the, uh, Fog Signal Roof Project, you can see it was a dramatic difference, uh, when it was completed. And that was in 2009 or 18. Uh, the next project was the top of the tower, which all 10 panels of the laminated glass had been vandalized by 22 bullets during the period of time that the Coast Guard had decommissioned the station and before 1996 when we took over. So we got a, uh, we got several grants to help us and we repainted the whole top of that tower. Um, and I commend the people who worked for Todd Britton and Meridian Contracting because there is no way in the world that any of us would be up there. But, um, it's a pretty cool view. And now the, the lantern room is all restored. The windows are all, everything is now watertight. We had a lot of, um, water infiltration coming down the tower. So it caused a lot of, a lot of damage. This was, uh, what happened to the boathouse. Uh, obviously mother nature finally took its toll. Um, and that was a big hangup, which has slowed down the transfer of the remaining property out there because that was deemed hazardous and so it had to be removed so that the rest of the island now can be transferred to the township. Um, the waves, the wind, it just took over. So, but this is what happened in 2022. A big barge came from Dean Marine out of Detroit and with a crane and they lifted it off its foundation and they brought it back to shore. And they de- um, constructed it onshore. They kept all the old, um, timbers for us to reuse. That was our project last year was the painting on the keeper's quarters. They also repainted the top of the tower. There was a failure in the paint, between the paint and the primer that they had used. And so, um, they were very gracious to come back and give it a whole new look. This is why I'm here tonight. We need a dock badly. And if you look at the Google area, you can see what we deal with. We do not have one. The dock that you see on the left-hand side is actually Middle Island. And the reason that we put that in our slide is because we feel those galvanized round caissons that they use might be actually something that would work very well for Thunder Bay because the ice will not dam up against them. Um, now where we have, and I'm gonna walk back here and just point this out because it's kind of hard to see. This is how we gained access to the island. There is a blasted channel that comes in here and you can see it. It's a little darker on your slide. This is where the old boathouse was. It's now gone. Um, but we're, we're hoping now to get, uh, preliminary engineering study and a grant to do, uh, the design for the dock. Um, we had initially thought that we were instructed that we had to put it back over here where there was a historical dock. Um, the state historical preservation office today did a 180 and said, no, we think we should put it over here. And that's probably a good thing. This is the edge of the blasted channel. We don't have any artifacts. We don't have any remnants. This, if you see all this stuff in here, this is all rocks and remnants and metal. Uh, all kinds of debris that was left over from this building and the two boathouses that used to exist there. So this is super, super important. Um, and it seems like, uh, everything is kind of falling into place, but maybe a little bit too fast because that project is eligible for an MDNR preliminary engineering grant. However, that grant has to have a letter of intent by April 1st. In order for the township to be eligible for MDNR grant, your rec plan has to be up to date. So I think that's suggestive why I'm here and I think I'm kind of got it all in one fell swoop.
Okay, so we went over 10 minutes.
I'm sorry.
I have questions, so I'm going to take it over that.
Okay.
So, thank you for leaving it there. If there's a dock in the middle of the water, how do you get to the island? Or will it connect the whole way?
It will connect. It will be a dock in the walkway.
Okay.
To the island.
What is, is, are you partnered with CVV for the ecotourism piece?
Not yet, and we haven't done that because it's really up to the township to screw that on.
Okay.
And we didn't think that was really a good idea until we had access that was safe. Uh, we have been taking two boats to get there for years now. A big boat that transfers passengers and, and my husband in a little Boston whaler that ferries people to shore. That is not the best situation and it's not the best situation for tourism either. So that's why this now has become a real issue.
I saw a thing the other night on, um, on social media where they're seeking, um, it was Meg Schwartz in Great Lakes Straight Responsibility. Oh, sorry. Um, I've never been told I needed a microphone. Jesus. Um, but it was on the social TikTok and Meg was saying that you're hiring a light keeper? Is that an accurate statement or do I have the wrong island?
You have the wrong island.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to, that's what I was getting confused about because is it Middle Island that you can rent it and camp?
Yes.
Is?
It's, that's, yeah.
Okay, then I'm just confusing the two. That's all it is.
Middle Island is a little further north than Thunder Bay.
Yeah, got it.
Yeah, and there was a point in time, and I don't know if this will ever come back to be considered again, but we had actually thought because there are so few safe harbor or safe refuge along the way. I mean, the closest one now will be Hammond Bay. Um, that maybe that was a distinction that we might want to investigate with the township to see because there is some money for that, but, um, I, I, that's way beyond my bailwreck, so I'm not.
So I just, so I can connect the dots in my head. In order, you have to make improvements in order to make the transfer to the township?
No, we, we don't. The, the Bureau of Land Management actually owns the northern end of the island.
Okay.
And they, the township made application for that property because it's federally owned. There's a whole process that you have to go through. That process was started in 2020. Then we had a pandemic and then we had staff and we had all kinds of issues. It is supposed to be done fairly soon and I would think.
Okay.
Hopefully by next month.
Okay.
That also will come with a land patent. But to do an engineering, uh, design for a dock, you don't have, you aren't required to own the property. In fact, you, the township has a leg up because it's covered under the, um, National or the Natural, um, Environment Act for, for Michigan under Michigan compiled law. If you are an entity, a government entity that is trying to maintain a historic offshore light, you are given grant priority status.
Okay, so then the federal government owns that northern part that we want to.
Right now.
How, do we just, do you just acquire it as a township, as a municipality? Or is it like a dollar, like we sell it like a car?
A hundred dollars.
Oh, oh, wow. Start a GoFundMe.
You tell them.
So a couple things. One, one of the things that, uh, I, one thing you should also mention is, uh, part of the process with Thunder Bay Island Preservation Society is that they did grant funding to do a very lengthy, uh, it's called a Historic Structures Report. And that is the mechanism that you can leverage projects and scope and what your direction is. Very similar to a master plan for the island. Um, so through this process, uh, the first, the, the southern 43.15 acres um, was actually, uh, with the, the preservation was before I was in office. Uh, that occurred, uh, thankfully with the, the work of our steward group, um, on Carl Levin's Coketails. Uh, and every good politician likes to have as much sunshine on his, his back as the first day when he had, likes it on his front. Um, so that was a, a, an easy fix, uh, but, and it was a quick transfer. And now this has been really since 2014, really with the continuation of discussions of what happens with the remaining 131 acres. So Form 299, Form 299 that was submitted for the transfer, uh, property affidavit, uh, was a hundred dollar check from the township. At that point in time on Form 299, they have a, a clock that starts at 30 days. Um, so this transfer should happen within one month's time. Um, and so that's the missing piece. Um, and part of the, the, the question of how do we use it recreationally, uh, is we need that northern part because.
Because you need access.
Well, it was always tied together because right now, uh, the dividing line between our 43 acres and 131 is an easement from BLM for, for ingress and egress. But that is its own principal trail. So once that's no longer an easement and solely ours, it affords us some more flexibility. Um, commercial activity, uh, we have controls and also there are controls and Bureau of Land Management, uh, uh, paperwork that says at certain levels, uh, commercial activity is banned. So how does that look like going forward? We, as a municipality, I believe we pushed Ordinance 133, uh, which was, uh, an ordinance in reaction to illegal, um, commercial activity happening, taking place, uh, on the township. Uh, and unfortunately that was a, a bad actor. Um, that he tried to help with fundraising by leaving all his empty beer cans on the shore after every, after every voyage, which I thought was notable.
Cause you're a dog.
Yeah, yeah. 10 cents at a time, you know? That's how you get there. So moving forward, um, uh, Thunder Bay Island Preservation Society, uh, it was, uh, chosen this year for Giving Tuesday. Uh, they raised funds. They have their own funds. Currently in my proposed budget, I have that missing third, uh, which will hopefully pay for the engineering study of the dock because however we want to even think about using it, we can't even have that discussion in whole until we have safe ingress and egress from the island. Um, and so that's why I appreciate your time, Mother. Um, and in reference to, well, Susan's gonna be. Um, uh, but.
Smack you in the mouth.
She will, she will, but not on camera. Um, she's a smart woman. So no, that's, that's kind of where we're at. We're, it's been stagnant. Um, there's a lot of turnover in BLM. Um, we gave a hundred dollar check before. They never even did it, but we had to give another because now they have a new property, uh, real estate manager. But she's really come on board and I think she's done her due diligence internally because, uh, the BLM local office, uh, that covers our region is in, uh, uh, Wisconsin. Um, so that's been a good energy and synergy thus far and I'm hoping that it continues with, uh, hopefully, uh, in a very short period of time, uh, the transfer of the remaining 131 acres of poison ivy and artifacts, et cetera.
Well, and I'm looking at it as an opportunity too for NOAA and I mean.
So, and NOAA sold, so I've already started these talks, uh, with Jeff Gray and Stephanie Ganduel. Um, they sold the Lady Michigan to Jeff Concheck. Uh, Jeff Concheck was also looking at starting kayak businesses. So that's how we're looking at it because Ordinance 133 has a control mechanism where if there's an entity such as the Lady Michigan, for example, we need proper partnerships. I always stress this when we're talking about, uh, recreational plans and sensitive areas, whether it's the nature preserve by Misery Bay is, how do you showcase something so sensitive? Because I do not want our next Akkiak Falls. Love it to death. And now you have cruise ships. There's 24 cruise ships from One Liner proposed for this upcoming year. Uh, in my meeting with, uh, members of NOAA two weeks ago, um, there are eight other international cruise ship companies that sail the Great Lakes. Nine total boats and only two of which are through Viking. So what is that threshold? What is the capacity? So I think that's probably one of those upcoming phases is after the ingress and egress is addressed is letting professionals like here on Pines, um, any art, you know, NOAA, what? They're all, they're, they should all be partners. Um, but at, not at the cost of preserving our culture and our history of Elpina. So I'm going to stop rambling. And so that's, that's the nice little intersection and that's what brings us to this point of your, your meeting is a, a resolution before you that will come to, uh, our board and we'll continue to take that action.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
The contamination, Sue.
Oh, they used to dump their fuel and paint.
Did they? It's normal. Yeah.
Normal.
Yeah, everybody dumped it out the back door.
Yeah.
They're on an island.
Yes.
Someone will clean it up.
But as you see on the east side of the island, this is the same interpretive as the slide. On that eastern end, it goes from ankle-deep water sitting on, on a solid rock to, I believe it's a 57-foot vertical rock.
It's like the face of a wall.
You can troll. I've been on Snyder's boat trolling, next to the island, talking to them.
No kidding?
Catching steel.
I've only been out that way once and it was on Lady Michigan and I'd love to.
I think with Norm and Tom, I think you have to go there.
Yeah. Yeah. Appreciate it. I was out there, it was just this fall, we were on our lady boat, our Lady Michigan tour and we went out that way and I was like, huh, this is where it is. Hey, cool. Like, I'm just not a lighthouse tourist. Right.
But you need to go with the people like Sue and.
Yeah.
And that know the island so they can show you and tell you about it when you're moving about them.
Well, it reminded me, I just recently went on a trip to Iceland and the preservation that they've taken for their former Viking hut homes that are still intact from 700, you know, B.C. or whatever it was.
The dam.
Mm-hmm.
Sharing and protect.
Love it.
We need to just, we just want it.
Yeah, because, uh, too many people out there would be. And not, and on super, they have to be, you know, there has to be some kind of supervision.
There's so many layers.
Yeah.
Though it only makes sense to utilize partners such as NOAA and State and group, and group contact with our steward group, which could have a positive interface with now Jeff Concheck and the third funding in the veneer. But it's still that, what is the capacity? Because not only the, the eco-tourism aspect of, what are our emergency services capabilities? Because if things go wrong, it's an hour helicopter travel from Travis just to get here.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And things go bad in our Coast Guard. I don't know if you've met that before. But they say, oh.
Oh.
Coast Guard. There were seven people on a boat, four of which is their first time on a boat.
Oh, Lord.
So it's navigation. There's a reason that there's so many ships. It's not even.
But that's not even a, yeah, no, no. Mm-hmm, because it's not a, it's not a, it's not an easy terrain. So, well, when it goes from ankle-deep to 57 feet, boom.
Yeah.
Your, a storm kicks up, you're S.O.L.
Yeah.
The rock, the rock side. You're not trolling. You're on, you're with your dad. Very enlightening. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay, public hearing. Resolution to adopt, resolution to recommend adoption of Elpina Area Joint Recreation Plan, the Board of Trustees.
I move to open the public hearing.
For, for.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Nobody?
I don't. So.
I move to close the public hearing.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Okay, now. Charter Township, we're in a, we have a resolution here. I don't know if everybody have that. Okay. To. Adopt the Opina area Charter Township of El Pina. Planning Commission Resolution Regarding Adoption of the Opina Area Joint Recreation Plan. And do you want me, do you want me to read the entire, okay?
I make a motion to adopt the Opina Area Joint Recreation Plan and recommends adoption by the Charter Township of El Pina. Board of Trustees supported by.
Michelle. I'll support.
I'm gonna do a roll call.
Yes.
Larry?
Yes. Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
John?
Yep.
And Michelle?
Yes. This is every five. Might I recommend a little more training as to what the expectation is?
Yes, so. One of the last meeting that you weren't at.
Yes.
The collective opportunity to actually have better synergy between the board and this planning commission. And Simon's looking for two members of this commission to interface with the existing CIP. Committee through the board of trustees, which is trustee Reiner, clerk of law, and myself. That was what I pulled off those agendas, keep it in mind in there. But having two representatives in a committee format would bridge the gap. Cause one thing I learned through this, unfortunately, like many things in this township, it was siloed. With an individual, I don't take that approach. And so yes, better discussion, better information, better presentations. But part of the, the recommendation that I, I'm looking for two members and I'll, we can go back for next month and I can get into more details. Working on a quarterly basis to where in five years' time.
We're not scrambling.
We're not scrambling. I'm not doing the lift and then realizing that.
It was still siloed.
It was still siloed.
I mean, that's really what it was. I'm just, that whole meeting that we were at out in Osneek or wherever that was, I was just like. I don't even know what I'm thinking about. I don't even know what I'm looking at. I'm just gonna rely on my supervisor, which I should be able to. But also, you know, we're gonna pass a plan. Correct.
I'm building bridges.
And then the master, master plan too. Master plan also.
The master plan is the next part.
When is that? I don't know the year that.
So the master plan, we were awarded funding through NOAA for coastal stewardship. I forget coastal resiliency. And that's locked because NOAA decided mid-quarter that they're gonna use a new financing software. And the entire state of Michigan's application got frozen. So instead of an active date of April one, which would have coincided hopping right into the master plan. It is now delayed until October one, hopefully. So we were awarded money and at some point in time, we will get said money. But that will be the next project of this and that will be a process nonetheless. But I'm taking a different approach because even with some of the members that have been here. I've learned, especially through this rec plan, is that what I thought was kind of an understanding, at least having some experience going through the rec plan and the master. That was never really open dialogue and I, I just, it's not my vision for Opina. It's, it's the collective. So, no, that will, once I get better clarification, that will be part of that bridging committee as well of looking at that. Because then we can look at what our recreational, what our master plans are, aligning with CIP. Now nobody's in the dark because we're gonna have two representatives on this committee that are well-versed in it, not just myself. And then there'll be that same dialogue at the board. So it's not gonna be, what were they thinking? It's because we're all on the same page. Which will be the first time and.
Also, when you know that you're entering that arena where you're gonna open up the, update to your rec plan. Will you email or send a letter or something to your rec, your recreational opportunity shareholders here? And, and let us know that you're starting that process so that we can give you.
It makes sense.
That we feel might be necessary on our portion of the, of the township's rec plan. Because I know, but if Nathan said, I, you might wanna revisit this and see if there's some stuff for Thunder Bay Island. I think Denise was like almost like to the end. And, and so it would help if, if we had a heads up and say, hey, take a look at what it says about your organization. And, and what updates do you think might be necessary?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Jointly is, there's pros to it. But there's, there's cons to it. Cons are Denise is hearing from too many people at one point in time. That are going in too many different directions. And that was about at the Osneek. How can we frame this?
Yep.
A linear and, and the technical aspect of it was they looked at what we kind of, unfortunately. And I say that with, with humility and grace, unfortunately, that I had on the dock and that didn't come from me. And so moving forward, it's not my dock. It's, that's, you, you missed one of the meetings because I, I kind of helped and clarified the bridge there. It shouldn't have been. And so that's why.
Well, and you know, I looked at it from a perspective of thank God Mary Catherine and Rachel, Rachel?
Yeah.
Is that her name? Thank you. Cause they pretty much ran that meeting because you're looking at a group of. No offense, but.
Yeah.
Country volunteer zoning commission guys who are well into their seventies and eighties going. We got two trails. We're gonna clean up the garbage. You know, like they didn't, they don't, granted, they don't have in-depth rec plans. Because they don't have that much surface area, but how much more could we take advantage of with a little bit more education? Maybe some younger blood on those boards, that kind of thing. So I think that that was an eye-opener for me that. There needs to be a little bit less silos and the fact that we've got youth understanding that, that it's not just the way we've always done it.
No, I think that there's, there's pros and cons to that.
Correct.
Because then it's held hostage by genius allies, as it was in conversation that. For the most part, the veteran to keep it going and focus. But is that really what we want?
Correct.
That's, that's advantage.
They do that all day, every day. That's their job. Like they should be the pros at it, but they also have more stake in it as well. But I looked at, you know, someone like a Charlie Pretty, I mean, my God.
That's the odd thing with the county planning.
Oh.
They serve no true purpose other than being the county seat. And have, because we actually.
So they should have been educating the townships of which are writing.
You go to.
Got it. Yeah, sure. Sorry, everyone. I kept us over thirty minutes. I don't have to come next time. I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
They.